Hello, good evening. I'm calling the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Education to order per government code five four nine five zero executor and Education Code Section three five one four zero executor at seventeen oh one P M., also known as five oh one. Trustee Frazier is participating via teleconference and all votes will be taken by roll call. We're going to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters: Public employee discipline dismissal, suspension, release, leave, assignment, non-relection, non-reappointment, resignation, reinstatement pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. Personnel matters: public employee appointments, employment pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. Assistant superintendents, directors, principals, and assistant principals. We have a conference with labor negotiators, Dr. Alex Chernus, Superintendent Gary Stein, Assistant Superintendent of Admin Services, Dr. Isaac Gates, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources regarding C S E A, A P L E, and P L U M., as former President Sean Youngblood used to say. We'll also have a conference with legal counsel in regards to anticipated litigation per government code Section five four nine five six point nine subsection D subsection two with David Huff of Orbach Huff and Henderson, and that will be regarding two cases. We also have claims and general liability claim number six three two one six five. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session at seventeen oh two. All right, we are going to reconvene to regular session at eighteen oh six P M. Our report at a closed session is as follows. The board took action to appoint Renee Gray, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services effective January sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. It was a five zero vote. The motion was by Sean Youngblood, seconded by Todd Frazier. The board also took action in closed session to non-reelect probationary certified employees for the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five school year as is identified in Resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen. The motion was by Sean Youngblood, the second was by Todd Frazier, and the vote carried five to zero. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chernus to introduce Renee Gray as our new Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services.
All right, so pending board approval. Good evening, President Blades, trustees, and Executive Cabinet and community. We're thrilled tonight to promote Ms. Renee Gray, our new Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. Mrs. Gray has served P Y L for the past ten years in a variety of roles, most recently as the Executive Director of Special Education and the Northeast Orange County Selpa. Her career in public education spans twenty-six years across local school districts as a Coordinator of Psychological Support Services, Coordinator of Child Welfare and Attendants, School Psych, and School Counselor. Mrs. Gray is a champion for the success and well-being of all children. She's an experienced leader who focuses on support, on supporting our district's most vulnerable students, and we're going to see some of that tonight. I'm very excited about that. Some of her accomplishments for our district include leading the first preschool Head Start Co-Teach Model in Orange County schools, bringing forward a board resolution focused on inclusion for special education students, and improving the delivery of special education services by providing training and resources to reinforce best practices, compliance, and delivery of specialized services. I'd like to invite her to say a few words. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Is that on yet? Thank you, President Blades, members of the board, Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I am grateful for this opportunity to serve you as your new Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. I appreciate the board's and superintendent's vision in creating this position to further support our most vulnerable students, and over my past ten years in P Y L, it has been my honor to lead the district's Special Education Department as we advocate for inclusivity and work together to support our students on I E Ps. I am so appreciative of the unending work of each member of our Special Education Leadership Team, and I eagerly anticipate collaborating with members of each department whose work is integral to enhancing and strengthening the academic experiences of all of our students. Lastly, through my career, it has always been my commitment to provide a voice for our most challenged students, and I very much look forward to continuing this important work with the district's support staff, school sites, and community as we forge ahead to prioritize students' needs. Thank you again for this opportunity.
All right, now for our pledge of allegiance.
Before you go on, could I just say one thing? Because if that's okay. I am incredibly proud to have you up at the dais. It really, to me, shows that we are putting all of our students, our special education students, at the same level as everybody else and from the top down. So I'm incredibly proud of the work that you've done over the last ten years and happy to work with you to make sure that each one of our students is well taken care of. So I just wanted to make sure that I got a chance to say that because we've worked together for a lot of time, and special education is near and dear to my heart, and you know that. And so I just feel like elevating you to this position and putting you up here at the dais really represents how we see everyone and how we see all of those students. So thank you.
And now for our pledge. Marilyn Anderson, will you lead us?
Can you please rise? Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is going to be our roll call, and we are going to have to do a roll call down the line tonight because Todd Frazier is remote. So can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Youngblood?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Here.
And I am here. All board members are accounted for. Can I get the approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Education Agenda as presented.
A second.
I'll give that to Ms. Buck. Do you have any comments? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I myself am an aye. Next is our public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available on the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. There is a maximum of three minutes per person, and tonight we have three speakers, so you'll each get to utilize your three minutes. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given, but please let us know ahead of time so we are prepared. The civility policy per Education Code two two zero prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crime set forth in Section four twenty-two point fifty-five of the Penal Code, including immigration status. And next, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Do I have any comments? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries five zero. Next, we're going to move into our presentations, and as of this time, Mrs. Renee Gray is going to introduce this item.
Okay, this evening I will be presenting on our two programs that we've created for our adult transition students called the PLUS Program, standing for Placentia Linda Upward Success, as well as our ADVANCE Program. Okay. Good evening, President Blades, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Chernus, Executive Cabinet. I have the pleasure to present this evening, programs in our district that uniquely meet our students' needs and promote positive post-secondary employment opportunities for our students with I E Ps. In tonight's presentation, I will share information about our Adult Transition Program and the expanded programs entitled ADVANCE and PLUS, which we have built to serve our adult learners. I will be presenting the pathway to success through the programs we've instituted to increase literacy for some of our students and the encouraging data we have collected. Lastly, our inaugural student from our PLUS Program is here to present her experiences thus far in her new employment with our district. This quote encapsulates the essence of tonight's presentation and embodies the shared belief within special education regarding the students under our care. All students can learn and succeed, but not on the same day and in the same way. In special education, we are required to provide transition services for those students on I E Ps who are unable to earn a regular high school diploma, and that is defined by Education Code five six zero two six point one. These students are entitled to attend an adult transition program and continue receiving special education and related services until the age of twenty-two. California, along with other states in our nation, realize the impact that not receiving a diploma has had on some of our students with I E Ps. As a result, recent legislation in the form of Assembly Bill one eighty-one, the Alternative Diploma Pathway, has provided more opportunity for students with disabilities to earn diplomas through alternative means. In P Y L U S D, our Adult Transition Program is entitled Venture Academy. Venture Academy is a post-secondary program that helps young adults ages eighteen to twenty-two transition successfully from school to adult life. Venture provides instructional and work-related activities that enable students to learn the essential work, personal, and social behaviors necessary for employment and independence. Students gain the confidence to make their own decisions, take responsibility for their actions, and gain knowledge of their rights as individuals. The focus at Venture Academy is to support students with disabilities as they progress through the following skills: literacy, work experience, recreational and social activities, independent living skills, and connecting with community resources. This school year in P Y L U S D, we are closely examining what we have coined the School-to-Work Pipeline. The pipeline, if you will, is being intentionally built to ensure all of our educational programs for our students with I E Ps provide the literacy and skill development that will eventually enhance our adult students and the programs and equip them with vital skills for employment post-graduation. Our focus is on delving into literacy and targeted skill building, especially for students encountering literacy challenges. This approach significantly amplifies their communication prowess, paving the way for greater success and a smoother transition into post-secondary work and community life. Two newly developed programs, as I mentioned before, ADVANCE and PLUS, have been crafted to bolster this School-to-Work Pipeline, providing crucial support for our students. Now, prior to delving into the details of our two new programs, I do want to discuss the foundational aspects of literacy that our special education team focuses on. This emphasis is aimed at enhancing the prospects of success for students who will eventually join the workforce. Literacy traditionally confined to reading and writing skills now spans a broader spectrum, encompassing language, numeracy, visual representation, interpretation, and actually understanding cultural symbols. Some of our students, while encountering challenges in conventional literacy methods, demonstrate literacy by recognizing symbols like a stop sign, the shape and the color, understanding its cultural significance to prompt them to stop. This, too, is considered literacy. Communication's bedrock lies in receiving and expressing information encapsulated in listening and speaking. So while reading and writing are pivotal for future success, their acquisition does not have to adhere strictly to traditional routes. For students who absorb information differently and express themselves through alternative means such as visual communication systems, we've implemented intervention and support programs like Readtopia. Readtopia is the literacy program we are utilizing for our students with more complex needs. This program is comprehensive, evidence-based, and most importantly, age-respectful. Our teachers couple Readtopia with the thirty-six core words most commonly used in the English language, and they assist students in literacy and communication development. Readtopia allows readers to progress from emergent to conventional skills. Classics such as Journey to the Center of the Earth and of Green Gables or contemporary works such as the Life and Work of Jane Goodall are typical texts which allow for age-appropriate access to great literature for our students. The use of core words allows all students to have a voice in participating in class discussions. The success of the program is highlighted by the expertise of our speech and language pathologists. They push into literacy classes, supporting our teachers with vocabulary development and comprehension. These graphics represent our student progress through the use of Readtopia literacy program. The first graphic on the left, while small, I will describe it, left represents one of our pre-symbolic readers who has yet to master symbolic representation of language, but has demonstrated growth in several communication cluster areas as measured by the communication matrix. This is a complex set of data. However, what is evident is these two tables is that the colored boxes, yellow representing emerging, orange mastered, and gray surpassed depicts this student has increased in clusters such as making requests, making choices, and naming items amongst other important communication skills. As you can see, from March two thousand and twenty-two to March two thousand and twenty-three, this student with extensive needs made significant growth. In total, the student gained the use of an additional eleven clusters of symbols. This is just one sample of the positive impact we're seeing through the use of Readtopia and Core Words Instructional Program. The transitional conventional readers depicted on the graph to the right signify students who are nearly fluent and have begun to adopt reading behaviors. These students have made positive gains between September and December of just this school year. As you can see, from just four months of participation in this program, eight out of ten students have shown growth in their oral reading fluency as measured by words per minute. One has remained the same, and one student due to attendance has slightly dropped. So through our expanded focus on literacy, we realize the potential impact it can have on post-secondary outcomes. And this is for all of our students with special needs. As a result, our district has our two programs, the first of which is ADVANCE that I will be describing to you. ADVANCE aims to help our students advance, if you will, to their education and prepare them for the workforce. ADVANCE provides a bridge for special education students currently placed in Venture Academy who have nearly met graduation requirements and therefore do not require the full four-year program that Venture offers. These students often need extra support in obtaining a regular high school diploma. El Camino Real High School works in collaboration with Venture Academy to provide the academic credits, instructional support, and career exploration. Students leave ADVANCE with a regular high school diploma as well as specific skills qualifying them for post-secondary college and career. Our second program of focus is the PLUS Program, Placentia Linda Upward Success. PLUS signifies our School-to-Work Pipeline. P Y L U S D is now providing opportunities for our students to intern and/or return to our district as employees through our district's School-to-Work Program. The focus of PLUS is to provide work-based learning internships with us, to Venture and ADVANCE students with facilitated onsite training and experience in various P Y L U S D departments such as print shop, nutrition services, maintenance, and special education. And we are expanding by partnering with Goodwill Industries and their job coaches to assist us through the Career Navigator Program to enhance our job suitability studies for our students. Our Adult Transition Program provides linkages as well with community resources such as North Orange County Regional Occupational Program and Department of Rehabilitation. Historically, through our Adult Transition Program, we have worked diligently to increase the job and career opportunities outside of P Y L U S D by matching student interests and skills to jobs. And now through our two new programs, we are moving toward becoming a more integrated employment organization. It has been wonderful to see the collaboration between El Camino Real High School and Venture Academy as they identify students who with some additional, a little bit more academic support, are able to leave Venture early and then receive a regular high school diploma. ADVANCE also focuses on resume building, interview skills, and just providing more opportunity for attaining employment through these internships. We are really increasing the potential of our students obtaining permanent employment within our very own district. The ultimate goal is to enhance our adult student opportunities to ensure that our students, upon leaving P Y L U S D, maintain a robust support network contributing to their future success. So we have a video here which epitomizes it just taking one person. And I think we've all been talking about these two programs coming to fruition and how we can make this work, and so this video will show the opportunities, believing in one person, how it can have a contagion effect. Okay, so it only takes one person to start the chain of change. Okay, so tonight, the best part of this evening, actually, is we are fortunate to receive an in-person testimonial from our very first School-to-Work inaugural student, Anna Yelly Jimenez. Will you please come up, Anna Yelly? And you notice she's wearing her PLUS logo, uniform. Anna Yelly is compassionate, patient, kind, hardworking, eloquent, and trustworthy. She is the exact type of person we want to work with our students with special needs. It was her desire to work with children, specifically students with disabilities. She started as a student at Venture, and George Key was her community-based work experience site. She graduated in June two thousand and twenty-three with a certificate of completion and continued to work at Key as a volunteer. When approached about the possibility of working for P Y L, she was very excited. So Anna Yelly, I'm going to ask you if you wouldn't mind reading your quotes. Can you see them up there? Or you can read from right here, whichever is more comfortable. Yep?
Academy. They pushed me to reach my goals in volunteering at George Key School. The students are nice, and I feel good, and I'm happy when I go home. I feel like I belong there and I have a purpose.
And I know that maybe a couple of individuals might want to ask you a couple of questions, if that's okay.
So I have a question here. First of all, Anna Yelly, we're so proud of you. I'm jealous of your uniform. I wish I was wearing one of those. I want to thank your family for coming and for your teachers that are here tonight. I do understand you bring quotes every day for the students you work with. So my question is, where do you get these quotes and what inspires you to bring these quotes to share each day?
Sometimes I just think about them, and it would just come out of nowhere. Or sometimes I would just look it up and just feel which one feels in the moment. And most of the times it does, and it touches one person sometimes in the school, and it always makes me feel good because that's just for them in the moment.
I have a question. What do you find is the most rewarding part of your job and what is the most challenging?
Just being there makes it just a reward, just waking up knowing that I'm pushing myself to help people. It makes me want to like just be here and stuff. And the most difficult part is sometimes like you don't know what they're going through, and sometimes people will see them not as like us and stuff and not treat them like us, and it's not really good, you know? Just knowing that there are people out there that love them for who they are, that's all I really care about.
Thank you so much. And I just want to be sure to thank our staff at both of the schools. Rebecca Allen leads, and we have even some of the staff here from Venture. Everyone cares so deeply for our students at these schools and El Camino Real High School as well, and how much they're working with our ADVANCE Program. It is just so nice to see everybody working collaboratively together for the best for our students, so thank you.
All right, next, we have another presentation, and it'll be given by Dr. Olivia Young, and it's about our English Language Master Plan. And I believe the Assistant Director of Federal Programs, Jose Cabrera, will share this information on the district's three-year English Learner's Master Plan.
Thank you, President Blades. This evening, Jose Cabrera, Assistant Director of Federal Programs, will present the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven English Learner Master Plan. The E L Master Plan, for short, serves as an operational guide for district personnel as we seek to implement an outstanding academic program for all our students. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Cabrera to the podium to provide an overview of the organization and contents of the E L Master Plan. Thank you for your work on this big project.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Blades, members of the board, Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I am honored to be here tonight to share with you our E L Master Plan. This plan represents the voice of over two thousand eight hundred current students and their families. I would like to take this time to acknowledge our E L Master Plan team that was instrumental in the development and support of this plan. Thank you to our Ed Services leadership, classroom teachers, E L D teachers, site administrators, teachers on special assignment, as well as the students and parents from our D L A C for their support and guidance in the development of this plan. In P Y L U S D, we currently serve two thousand eight hundred and eight English learners in K twelve. Of those students, five hundred and fifty are newcomers. Notably, two hundred and five students have demonstrated exceptional proficiency, earning a score of four on the English Language Proficiency Assessment of California, L P A C. This is the first step in achieving reclassification status. Within our English learner community, one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine students are identified as long-term English learners, L T Ls, or at risk of L T L status. In our commitment to inclusivity and recognizing the diverse learning needs of our students, six hundred and eighty-seven students hold I E Ps. These plans, crafted with precision and care, accommodate the unique learning styles and requirements of students with diverse abilities. And also, in an effort to support and uplift our English learners, one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight students fall under the category of Reclassified Fluent English Proficient, or R F E P. Indicating successful progress on their language acquisition journey, monitored with care and attention, these students serve as beacons of success and inspire their peers. At the heart of our district master plan for the English learners lies the guiding principles of the California English Learner Roadmap Policy, which serves as the foundation for our approach to creating and implementing programs that go beyond the classroom. This roadmap provides clear guidance to our dedicated school and district leaders, offering a comprehensive reference to the essential services we commit to providing our English learners. In fact, our commitment to English learners is deeply embedded in the systems we establish, the goals we set, the relationships we cultivate with our families, and the harmonization and the harmonization of our practices across all school sites and grade levels. These pages symbolize our unwavering dedication to collaborative and learning together as we pursue our ongoing commitment to our rich, multilingual and multicultural student population. Our plan is organized to reflect the following six sections, ranging from identification of English learners to family engagement. This plan is not merely a set of guidelines. Rather, it is a strategic vision that will shape the educational landscape, fostering rigor and access for all English learners. In our increasingly interconnected world, proficiency in the English language is not only an academic necessity, but a key to unlocking and bridging opportunities for students. Of the greatest importance in our EL Master Plan are our four academic goals, performance goals, that we will carry out over the next three years. Making progress towards English language proficiency, the English Learner Progress Indicator, or ALPE, reports on the progress of English learners, students are making towards English language proficiency. The ALPE relies on the results of the Summit of ALPAC. As you can see on the screen, students' English language acquisition results of the Summit of ALPAC show that proficiency in English language is the first step for students doing well in other subjects such as reading, writing, mathematics, and science. The English Learner Progress Measure looks at the progress that English learner students are making towards achieving English proficiency. Importantly to note, over the past three years, PYL English learners have maintained growth and outperformed state averages. Our first academic goal is related to the English Learner Proficiency Indicator, or ALPE, which is measured through the Summit of ALPAC. In the spring of 2023, 54.2% of English learners made progress towards proficiency on the ALPAC. This means that the district earned an overall high progress level for the ALPE. This percentage will serve as our baseline status and we will measure the change over time in future ALPAC administrations. Our goal is to improve this performance by 3% each year. For the Summit of ALPAC administered in the 2223 school year, 20% of English learners achieved a score of four. As such, our goal is for the number of students achieving a four on the ALPAC is to increase by 5% each year. Our second academic goal is in the area of English Language Arts. In the spring of 2023, 11.4% of English learners scored at standard met or exceeded. Furthermore, we found that our English learners, 2,068, in total scored 41 points below standard. When we further disaggregate the data and look deeper at the current English learners, 1,227, we find that they scored 93.8 points below standard, while the current reclassified English learners, 841, scored 36 points above standard. As such, our goal is for the percentage of ELs who score standard met or standard exceeded on the Smarter Balance Summit of Assessment to improve by 5% each year. Additionally, our goal is for 80% of our ELs will decrease the distance from standard by seven points each year. The distance from standard measures how far, on average, students are from the lowest possible score for standard met. Standard met is identified as demonstrating the knowledge and skills necessary for students to be on track for college and career readiness at their grade level. Hence, a decrease in distance from standard is a positive indicator of progress. Our third academic goal is in the area of mathematics. In the spring of 2023, 10.6% of our English learners scored at standard met or exceeded. Our English learners, 2,070, scored 66.7 points below standard. Again, when we disaggregate the data, our current ELs, 1,229, scored 114.9 points below standard. Our current reclassified English learners, 841, scored 1.2 points below standard, which represents a decline of 4.3 points. As such, our goal is for the percentage of our ELs who score standard met or exceeded on the Smarter Balance Assessment to improve by 5% each year. Additionally, our goal is for 80% of our ELs will decrease the distance from standard by five points each year. Our fourth academic and final goal is in the area of reclassification. The reclassification rate for the 2021, 2022, and 2223 school year were 12.3% and 15.3%, respectively. As of January, I am happy to report that we have reclassified a total of 334 K-12 students. As such, our goal is for our reclassification rate to be at or above the state average each year. Following the academic performance goals, the EL Master Plan contains six main objectives that we will carry out over the next three years. Each of these objectives has detailed action steps to help ensure we will achieve them. There are six main objectives listed in the Master Plan and are detailed on the slides. First, the implementation of the EL Framework and EL Roadmap. Second, program evaluation. Third, we hope to maximize the district-wide assessment system. Number four, provide resources and professional development, equitable resource allocation, and our final one is to collaborate with families and community. So in closing, as we embark on this transformative journey on behalf of our English learners, let us remember that the success of our student is a testament of the success of our educational community as a whole. The EL Master Plan is not just a document. It is a commitment to providing every learner with the tools to thrive and fostering an environment where linguistic diversity is viewed as a source of strength and a bridge to boundless opportunities. On behalf of our students and families, we thank you for your time and commitment to their success. Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions before we move on?
Hi, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
I know you have been reaching out to our ELACs and the D-LAC Committee. What has been the response from our English Language Learner's parents?
Well, I think the overwhelming response is two. The first is they were very grateful that we led them through the process of input and actually getting their feedback. And number two, I think, is access to the information. And our actual Master Plan will be posted on the website. And our website has the ability to translate. And so many districts put a PDF, but we felt that it really looks clean and professional. It will be in English and then families have the opportunity to toggle between languages. Spanish is not the only language in our district. We also get requests from our D-LAC, Farsi and Vietnamese and Mandarin. So it's gonna be in that way. So those are the two overwhelming comments that we got, that the information, they really appreciate the information that we share. And then the access to the information is the second part.
Thank you. Because I really believe that information is power for the parents so they know what to be expecting. I've seen the draft of the Master Plan and I just think it's so powerful that it just really teaches the parents and all the goals revert back to the parents. They're getting update, regular updates. They're learning how to better help their students, their children, you know, become proficient at English. And I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this Master Plan and the really thoughtful goals of including not just the students or not just the teachers, but everybody that's working together for this goal.
We've linked quite a bit of resources for our parents as it relates to ALPAC. And so at our next D-LAC, we're actually gonna walk them through on how to actually log in, practice, because that's half the battle, actually learning and actually seeing and then practicing the ALPAC. And so that's our next focus at our next D-LAC meeting, which, again, it's feedback from them. We listen and we made adjustments to focus on the ALPAC.
That's good. Does it funnel them back down to the sites at the ELAC meetings?
Yes, so then they'll take that information and go and share it with their ELACs as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Todd, do you have anything?
No, this is all great. We're doing, I mean, this is great work. Thank you.
You're a little quiet, so I wanna check on you. Well, thank you. I know, I wanna say, five or six months ago, we were really talking about how important this was and we were really falling short. And so I'm so excited and I just wanna thank our team for doing this and making this a priority. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we are gonna enter into a public hearing. And a public hearing will be held relative to Resolution Number 23-14, the dedication of easement to Southern California Edison for right-of-way access to a concrete pad to stage construction equipment to maintain the slope and roadway for any repairs or maintenance on existing electrical poles on the eastern property line at Bernardo Yorba Middle School. And so I'm gonna declare the public hearing is open at 18:45. And is there any speakers on this topic? Seeing that there's none, we will close it at 18:46. All right, now we will head into public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have five speakers who are wishing to speak tonight and so each speaker will have three minutes each. And so since we have five, I'll have everyone come up and sit down in the front rows. And so the first speaker will be Nellie Raphael. Second speaker is Jeannie Paig. Third speaker is Shani Murray. Fourth speaker is John Quackenbush. And our fifth speaker will be Jocelyn Brodowski. So you'll each have three minutes. And Nellie, welcome. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Nellie Raphael and as a parent to two children currently in PYLUSD, I'm very concerned about the possibility of infiltration of Planned Parenthood Organization and their involvement in the sexualization of PYLUSD schoolchildren, which is deeply disturbing to many like-minded parents in the district. From the year of 2020 to 2023, Planned Parenthood programs funded 228 million worth of sexual education grants to public schools. Planned Parenthood is by far the largest player in the grant process. How does the Planned Parenthood receive so much funding? It's because they're the ones who create the standards that dictate the funding and are involved every step of the way. As you might imagine, the standards set by Planned Parenthood for children are far from age-appropriate. There are countless egregious examples of the ugly effects of Planned Parenthood's near-monopoly on sexual education in the US. The guides sponsored by Planned Parenthood suggest sterilization as a form of birth control. It also encourages teachers to assess students' ability to role-play in the classrooms. As one of the largest abortion provider, the second-largest provider of cross-sex hormones, and now the primary sexual health educator in the country, its damaging influence on the current and future generations is incalculable. The last few years demonstrated the need for transparency measures to take place within our school district. The government, California Teachers Union, certain school board members, they think they can replace the parents by indoctrinating our children with ideology that go against the parents' wishes and/or our religious beliefs. I guarantee if the school board decides to go ahead with this infiltration of Planned Parenthood, they will be met with two dilemmas. First being that parents will pull their children out of the public school system and choose to homeschool, which in reality grew exponentially. The second dilemma you will face will be parents removing the board members and/or officials who are trying to brainwash our children with the radical ideologies. We need to focus as a community to advocate for our children, speak up for them and put our children first. I commend the board majority for keeping Planned Parenthood and community schools out of PYLUSD because of the respect for parents' rights and fighting for transparency. In closing, I'd like to state that the greatest gift a parent can give to the dark world is an adult who can think critically, can discern truth from lies and understand and practice virtue. Children are still our greatest natural resource and we need them to come of age as educated, morally sound citizens. Together, we will uphold God's truth and the light that overcomes the darkness that we may face. We must also pray for our children and our country daily. Everything that matters to us is in jeopardy. Through His grace and strength, we will overcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jeannie?
Hi, my name is Jeannie Paig. Don't worry, I'm not here about the calendar. That is done. But I have two kids at Esperanza. I'm here to bring attention to Esperanza's parking lot. One teacher there called it a "choose-your-own-adventure." It's the worst and it's unsafe. Not only is it in need of re-slurry and painting, but the layout is horrible, especially at the area where that tennis court parking lot exits into that narrow area that essentially becomes one lane if cars are parked there. And there's cars going in three directions and they have to squeeze through there. My daughter's close friend just got in a fender bender last week with another student, right at that spot. And I knew that was gonna happen, so that's why I'm here. Also, the entrance exits, they have too big of a dip when you exit and so everyone's car that's not an SUV gets banged up in the front. That tennis court parking lot is just weird. You've gotta pass through it to get to the track in the back. And that parking lot back there is bad too. So there's just so many things wrong with it. I know money is tight with California's deficit, but if there's any budget at all for facility improvement, please prioritize redoing our parking lot. I know Mrs. Blades knows it well, but I encourage the rest of the board members to drive through it at its busiest times and see for yourself and try to find your way back to the track. We also have so many in the community using Esperanza's facilities, like flag football, OGP, the swim club. And so it's also for the community's benefit and safety as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Next is Shani.
Hi, first I just wanna say thank you for the presentations. They were very informative and I love hearing about the amazing programs in this district, so thank you. I'm just here with my continued plea for you to stop catering to the false fear-based narratives of extremists. The CRT ban didn't solve an actual problem in our district. It created one by pushing away student teachers. The recent outing policy doesn't actually protect students. It targets the LGBTQ community. I will say that notifying parents of a new book being piloted in a classroom makes sense, but requiring board approval both before and after piloting does not. It stifles student feedback, which is what motivated you to approve Persepolis. So please, focus on common sense solutions and prioritize rather than silence the voices of local students and educators. I saw you do this with your unanimous vote against the CRLA charter. Thank you. I was disappointed the Orange County Board of Education overruled your decision, but we need to support our local students, especially when the county board won't. I hope you will work to build a respectful, supportive environment where all students can thrive academically. Thank you.
John?
Good evening, board members, and thank you. So I also wanna be a voice for the parents that we don't hear about a lot that do believe in parents' rights too, but the right for the child to learn everything, the right for sex education, the right to learn about people that are like themselves, going through transitions or just our transition from elementary, junior to high school and to adulthood. Learn about racism, slavery, the good, the bad. You know, everything that we can in an educational form with a teacher that's knowledgeable and that can facilitate the conversation and be able to express, allow, especially in high school, allow the students to express their feelings and their understandings and make those corrections or facts, allow the, you know, facts and things. Some of the other things I think of is that, you know, we talk about sex education and all those things a lot and I'm one for, I want our students to learn everything from contraceptions to abstinence, the whole gamut of sexual education and to realize that this is a secular institution. It's not a... It's not, uh, a religious institution. So if we have religious beliefs, I have religious beliefs. I talk to my daughter, I go to church, and we have those conversations. But at the same time, there's those that don't have the same religious beliefs that I do, that aren't religious. And we need to allow the students to have the full education so that they understand the consequences of things and can have that conversation. When a child comes home, I always ask her how the day is, talk to them, find out the things. I don't always get the information for that day, but three or four days down the line, I might get, you know, the previous day's information and stuff. But when she's ready to talk to me, she talks to us, my, my wife and myself. Sometimes she talks to my wife instead of me, but, you know, we all, each parent has their own spot with that. Some, uh, so, you know, in causing to pit up supposed bans and things of, that might be taught at higher education, I always get worried that we stifle some of the abilities for teachers to feel comfortable talking about civil rights, talking about slavery, talking about World War II, talking about Reconstruction. There's a lot of details in there that we're all learning about. I'm learning new things about from my previous education on that. And, uh, since I'm wrapping up on time here, I wanted to say that it was great hearing the stuff. Um, I was once on a s- school site council, and the big thing was getting English lan- learning parents there at the committees, and it sounds like you're doing that, and I think that's a great deal and, uh, good, glad to see that improvement and those wonderful things that the district is doing. Thank you.
Our last speaker will be Jocelyn.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Burdowski. I've been in our district for 15 years, um, with my two younger kids and a little longer with my older one. But more specifically, in the past 15 years, I've consistently been asking for special education students to be included with their general education peers, to have higher levels of expectation for them and to graduate from high school with a diploma. I've never given up believing, believing in my son and believing in other students with disabilities, that they can achieve great things. Thank you, Mrs. Blades, for, for, um, bringing attention to this. Turnus for believing, and thank you, Mrs. Gray, for believing and for your dedication. This promotion is well-deserved, and I look forward to your greater influence across our district. I'm also thrilled with the innovative pathway being built with the new charter at OCSCS that truly allows for individual education plans to be executed in amazing ways. And honestly, all students, um, will have better opportunity to have their education and academics met individually as well. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to move into our general functions. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the Peachjar digital flyer distribution platform.
Second.
Dr. Turnus.
Okay, well, one of my goals here is to improve communication district-wide. We started that, uh, beginning of the year with the State of the District event. Um, we continued with superintendent roundtables and tons, hundreds of parents involved and engaged in our community, um, during nightly sessions. We have Monday messages where we're pushing out a lot of information, relevant information to parents. Um, and now we're looking at, um, streamlining the process by which we send notices to parents. So I'm very excited for, um, our director, Alyssa, to come up and, um, share this new program with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Turnus. Well, good evening, President Blades, trustees, superintendent Dr. Turnus, and executive cabinet members. I am grateful to be here this evening to share a brief presentation about many of the ways we foster an engaged community in the Placentia or Belinda Unified School District and a new digital flyer platform we are seeking your approval on to help our efforts in this important area. As you are aware, one of our focal points as a school district is to establish an engaged community, or rather, a culture that encourages positive relationships among our stakeholders, including our students, staff, and families, as well as our educational, business, and community partners. One of the many ways staff works to accomplish this is by utilizing all available resources to communicate with district stakeholders and the community at large. In fact, we make it a point to engage with our community regularly and through online platforms, print materials, and in-person meetings. Our school district and our schools do this by using a variety of strategies and tools, like our websites, social media platforms, advisory councils and committees, print and digital advertisements, emails and newsletters, text messages, phone calls, mobile phone app notifications, videos, surveys, media relations, other informational meetings, and so much more. New this year and under the direction of Dr. Turnus, we have enhanced our efforts to engage our community through the addition of our bi-weekly Monday message newsletter, as was mentioned, from the superintendent, which is shared with all staff, families, and local community leaders. At the suggestion of the board, we have started notifying all staff and families directly via email about upcoming board meetings while posting this information prominently on our website and social media platforms. We have expanded the opportunities for our families to participate in the superintendent's Community Advisory Committee from one group to four groups divided by elementary school, middle school, high school, and special education families. And in an effort to continue enhancing the ways in which we engage our community, tonight we are seeking the board's approval to expand the list of tools we use to include a new digital flyer distribution platform. To that end, Board Policy 1315: Distribution of Materials in Schools sets forth the following. The Board of Education recognizes that there may be legitimate needs for the use of the district's distribution capabilities by community groups in order to distribute information flyers to students for purposes other than the conduct of the educational program. Our hope is to improve upon our existing process for collecting and distributing such materials with Peachjar. Peachjar is a leading cloud-based communication platform that streamlines the process of distributing school and district updates and community resources directly to stakeholders as digital flyers. District-approved flyers are sent to families' inboxes and posted to school-specific online flyer boards. Peachjar does not collect or access any personally identifiable student information, and it, as it only needs parent email addresses and associated schools. Over 1,000 school districts nationwide use Peachjar, including surrounding districts such as Fullerton, Garden Grove, Newport Mesa, and Santa Ana. It is our belief that Peachjar will offer a wide range of benefits for our district, our families, and our community partners. For our district, Peachjar will provide greater control over flyers being sent home, resulting in more equity across schools and less work for our staff. It will also offer time savings by managing flyer approval and direct delivery digitally while serving as another good news channel resulting in more positive community engagement. For our families, Peachjar will deliver vital district, school, and community resources via email for easy on-the-go access while creating a centralized online portal for digital flyers in a variety of languages. And for our community partners, Peachjar will increase registrations and interactions via email, uh, sorry, interactions with flyers while providing campaign metrics to track engagement. It will also allow organizations to easily send district-approved flyers to multiple schools hassle-free. Using Peachjar is easy for staff. Simply upload a flyer to generate a periodic email to families and to update an online flyer board. Access to flyer boards will also be made available on websites, through our newsletters, and on the district's existing mobile app. And using Peachjar for, is convenient for our community partners. Simply upload a flyer to select schools and wait for district approval. There will be no cost for our PTAs, boosters, and education foundation to utilize the power of Peachjar, while outside user groups will be charged a very small fee. If and when approved, the district's disclosure statement will automatically be added to a flyer, and it will then be included in a school's online flyer board. Peachjar will also provide training for district and school staff, flyer templates to assist with sharing information, a flyer board designed for staff members if we so choose, and a community-free program where Peachjar covers the small fee for local charities to promote free programs, events, and resources where children are the direct beneficiary. In closing, we thank you for your consideration of Peachjar and all of the ways in which you support and create an engaged community here in the Placentia or Belinda Unified School District. On that turn, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, comments or questions?
I just had a question on the approval process. Um, who, you know, what department does it go through? And then, when they get to the school site, obviously it's approved as a flyer, but how can it be used as a paper flyer, and how does it also get that, um, the, the district piece on that?
Sure. So district staff will be the approving entity of, you know, each flyer, and then it will be pushed down for the school site, for their site administrators.
Is it still going to be through risk management like it is now?
It will be through the Communications Department and the Superintendent's Office now. Currently, it's housed in our Educational Services Department. Um, and then, yes, once a flyer is approved, our disclosure statement stating that certain events aren't district-sponsored events will be added to it automatically. And schools can certainly go about printing flyers still if they'd like, but that's what Peachjar really touts. Um, getting schools and districts away from is just the, the use of paper when, rather, using a, um, an easy, accessible online portal.
If a community member or organization wanted to have paper flyers submitted to school to be distributed, would, how would they coordinate that process? Would it still be how it is now? What, what would that look like?
Yeah, we would certainly make that, you know, a possibility for the school sites to still distribute the paper flyers. What I would say is that's happening on a very little,
Rare.
Yeah, rare basis right now, even just as we've moved to be so digitally as a district. But we would coordinate that, still adding the district-approved, um, statement on there and then making sure that the schools distributed, distributed it in that way as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, um, so are most of the schools going already digital? And there's just several different platforms, so this will streamline into one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Are there any schools that have a population that don't have access to emails or that type of, um, service? Or is, do you see that as an issue?
Certainly, I know that we have made great strides in getting our community hooked up digitally over recent years. Um, it's something we can look into with our specific school sites. I'm thinking even our Title I sites and connecting with them in a way that'll make this most accessible for them. I know our technology department in recent years has, um, really set a model of going out and walking families through how to do online data confirmation or sign up for a Gmail account, um, so they can access their students' Ares portal or whatever it may be, their information on behalf of their students. So we could certainly look into doing something like that as well for this.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everybody has access, that we're not cutting off any populations in our, in our district. And also, my last question is about the fee. Do you have an estimate of what the fee is for outside, um?
Mm-hmm. So the fee is $25 per school per flyer.
And that's, but then you said, like, nonprofits and things like that will not have to pay the fee?
Correct.
This might be something good to take to, um, our open houses as they're happening, especially as the Title I schools, and so that you could do some of that onboarding with parents at, on those nights that they're onsite.
Absolutely. Great idea.
All right, anything else? Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Todd.
So, uh, a couple of questions. Um, I, I'm a digital proponent, so I'm a fan of this. What is the app component of it?
So Peachjar will integrate into our existing, um, mobile app that the district has, and that's through formerly Blackboard, it's now through Final Site. So they'll, we'll just add a button to the Peachjar online flyer board to our existing app. It's not their own unique app. It's just going to be in ours.
Okay, good. So it's not another app. That's, that's good.
Correct.
The other question is, what kind of anal analytics do we have as far as opens, reads, that kind of stuff? Is that provided in this, on a backend dashboard?
Yes, absolutely. Um, Peachjar will give district staff, and then as well as our community partners that decide to advertise through Peachjar, um, full metrics in terms of open rate and even clicks on certain buttons that are added to flyers. They provide that in the backend for us to utilize and work off of.
Oh, good. That, that would be probably the biggest thing that I see as an advantage for this, other than the fact that, you know, digital is where everything's going. So, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Alyssa. All right, so, uh, if there's no more questions or comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I myself am, is an, am an aye, so the motion carries 5-0. Okay, next is, uh, 14.2, which is the nomination of representative to the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. I need a motion.
I'd like to nominate, uh, make a motion to, that we're nominating, recep- the nominating representative to the Orange County Committee on School District Organization, that we elect Marilyn Anderson as the district's nominating representative to the Orange County Committee on School District Organization and elect Todd Frazier as the alternate.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Buck. We have a second by Mr. Youngblood. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 5-0. Moving right along to Business Services. If I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to certify AB 1200-2756 report for the Association of Placentia Linda Educators for the 2023, 2024, and 2024 and 25 as proposed in the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stein?
Uh, thank you, and good evening, um, President Blades, members of the board, Superintendent Turnus, Executive Cabinet, and community members. Uh, tonight, under Human Resources Action Item 1, or Action Item, yeah, 1, staff will recommend that the board approve the 2324-2425 tentative agreement with the Association of Placentia Linda Educators, AKA Apple. Uh, in order to comply with the provisions of Education Code, uh, 1200 and 2756, we're required to disclose the major provisions of the agreement, including the costs, which is what this item is about. Um, the costs that will be incurred in the current year and two subsequent years. Uh, this information is the clo- needs to be disclosed prior to entering into the agreement. Um, and so included in the agenda is a document entitled "Public Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement" that highlights the key provisions and the costs. Uh, staff is recommending that the board certify the AB 1200-2756 disclosure as provided in item 15.1. Uh, we've submitted it to the county and had them review it already as well.
Any questions? Comments?
No, I'm glad that we ended up at this point and that we're able to get to this agreement. So thank you for all the work on that.
Todd, no questions?
No questions. Just great job on this.
I concur. Excellent job. Let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I myself am an aye. 5-0. The motion carries. Okay. Now we'll go into Human Resources. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Association of Placentia Linda Educators and the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Gates, you're up.
Thank you, President Blades, esteemed board members, Superintendent Dr. Turnus, cabinet, and community members. Tonight, I am pleased to bring forward the tentative agreement with the Association of Placentia Linda Educators for the 2023, 2024 negotiations. When brought to the membership- When brought to the membership, this agreement passed with ninety-four percent approval. I would like to thank those who served on Apple's negotiating team, including Jim Fox, Marge Cooley, Jeremy Kelly, Karen Alastic and Cliff Schuster. Thank you. I would also like to thank the district's negotiating team, including Dr. Young, Nancy Blades, Gary Stein, Kristen McDonald, Renee Gray, Assistant Superintendent Renee Gray, and Dr. Dan. We are grateful for the collaboration process with Apple and shared, and shared commitment to the ongoing success of our students and district. Thank you for your consideration of this tentative agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Gates, and thank you for all who collaborated with this. Do we have any questions or comments?
Happy once again that we reached this point and a two-year is a good deal.
Yes. Tried something new and it ended up working out well. Alright, roll call vote?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries five zero. Alright, we're gonna remain in the Human Resources Department and can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services.
Second.
Can I have a, Ms. Anderson, can you read sixteen point two in its entirety or would you like me to do so? Wait, where are we at? Sixteen point two?
I did.
Do I need to read this? Okay, this is me, it's me. Pursuant to Government Code five four nine five three, we need to approve the employment contract for Mrs. Renee Gray as Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services with an annual salary of two hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred forty dollars. She shall also receive all incentives available to other members of the district's certified management staff, including longevity pay and mileage stipend. The contract will remain in effect from January sixteen, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Have any questions? Comments? Alright. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
I myself am an aye. The motion carries five zero. Okay, now we go into our consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and our dean routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Is there any items tonight that need to be polled?
I have two to poll, nineteen point one and nineteen point one six.
Nineteen point one and nineteen point one six. Is there anything else that needs to be polled tonight?
Alright, it's nineteen sixteen. Nineteen point one six, nineteen sixty.
I think it's the same thing, but. Okay, is there anything else that needs to be polled? Then let's do a roll call vote for the rest of the consent calendar and this will be minus nineteen point one and nineteen point one six.
How about I make a motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, consent calendar besides the two items polled.
Second.
Alright, roll call vote. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries five zero. And then Ms. Buck, if you can.
Start with nineteen point one.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the following revised board policies in accordance with Assembly Bill one zero seven eight BP. Board policy one, zero four one zero, non-discrimination in district programs and activities. Board policy thirteen twelve point two, complaints concerning instructional materials. Board policy thirteen twelve point three, uniform for, uniform complaint procedures. Board policy fifty-one forty-five point three, non-discrimination harassment and Board Policy six one six one point one, selection and evaluation of instructional materials.
I'll second.
Take it away.
Sure, I'd, um, I'm, I'm ready to approve this. I just wanted to pull these because they happen to do with uh, board policies and I just wanted to make sure that they were read into the record, but I don't have any um, concerns or any changes on any of these.
Okay. Does anybody else have any concerns? Alright. So we'll vote for nineteen point one? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, no, roll call. Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Alright, carries five to zero.
And lastly, nineteen point one six, approve resolution, resolution number twenty-three point sixteen, dedicated, dedicating February twenty twenty-four as Career and Technical Education Month. Need a second.
I'll second. Okay.
And my only comment, I would be remiss if I didn't pull this and talk about it a little bit, um, being that I'm the representative of ROP this year. And so the, our Career and Tech- Technical Education Month um, is an incredibly important month that I want to recognize. We have some amazing career and technical education teachers and programs in our district and I just wanted to highlight those. So that's it.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that. My one um, son who's a senior Esperanza has utilized it for four years and it's been amazing.
Great. Love to hear that.
Roll call vote?
TTE is the best.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else cheer, wanna, you know, shout out?
I just shout out to all of our teachers and all of the program, people that put this, these amazing programs together and help our students um, gain valuable skills that they can utilize in their life and in their careers in the future and that they're prepared to get jobs when they leave our district. So I'm just grateful for this program and our district and I love to see it expand, get stronger. Um, as Ms. Gray said, more school to work pipelines would be awesome, so.
Absolutely. Alright, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. That motion carries five to zero. Up next is going to be our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Chernus, please.
Thank you, President Blades, members of the board. Um, first off, I want to thank our SRO, Officer Jung, for um, helping us out today over at Valencia. We really appreciate your efforts in keeping our kids safe. Uh, so thank you. So, uh, we have our four comprehensive high schools now accepting applications to the academies for twenty-four, twenty-five. So this includes the Digital Media Arts Academy and Ed Law Academy at Eldorado, the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, Aztec Engineering and Manufacturing Academy and Medical Science Academy at Esperanza, the Cambridge ACE Diploma Program, IB Diploma Program and Valtech Academy at Valencia and the Mustang Business Academy Yorba Linda. Um, application deadlines vary, um, so be sure to um, go ahead and put in for those. Uh, at our December meeting, as you know, the Orange County School of Computer Science was unanimously approved and there is a ton of excitement out there. We are now doing computer coding in all of our um, feeder sixth grade schools right now, our sixth grade classes. Um, and there's a roadshow, information, all parent meetings are going on at all of our sites. There'll be a showcase on Tuesday, January thirtieth at six PM at Bernardo Yorba. Um, so we encourage you all to join. Um, TK Parent Night, uh, next one will be Thursday, January twenty-fifth. And um, it'll be at six PM here in the boardroom. And so families are encouraged to attend. Um, if you have a child turning five between September and June. We have a district logo contest. There's a big hundred and fifty year anniversary coming up. So this is exciting. Um, to help commemorate it, uh, we have created a logo contest for our students. And we have over fifty um, submittals already. Um, so this is gonna be really cool. It's the, the, the contest's objective is to create a compelling and visually captive graphic design that symbolizes the district's hundred and fiftieth year anniversary. Uh, the winning design won't replace our logo, but will be the logo for the hundred and fiftieth uh, anniversaries. And so um, we have our judges. We're using our um, Superintendent's Roundtable members as judges. Um, so we're putting them to work as well as some other folks. Um, so really exciting about that. Um, and lastly, uh, I do share as Superintendent concerns about Assembly Bill seven thirty-four. Um, this bill is banning uh, tackle football for children twelve years and under. Um, while this doesn't directly impact district programs, it does impact many, many of our students. Um, as a parent, I see it could, could be impacting students' mental health. Um, and it's just, it, it, it's a nonsensical um, uh, overreach, governmental overreach. Um, I did some data here, digging here. There's a million student, a million children in the United States that do Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. Um, contact, hand-to-hand contact, uh, you, you win the matches oftentimes by submission. Um, there's a million kids that do tackle football. There's two hundred and seventy-five thousand kids that do ice hockey. There's two hundred thousand kids that do lacrosse. There's a hundred and fifty thousand kids that do wrestling. So to single out tackle football, when there's other contact sports that kids don't even have pads on, um, it, it doesn't make sense. There was already the um, Reform Act, um, Tackle Football Reform Act two years ago. Um, there's a ton of safety precautions. There's training, coaches are trained. And for a lot of these kids, this is, this is their, their way to be engaged. Um, this is their way to be engaged in life and we need to have faith in our parents to make those choices um, for their children and not have to have the state come in and say, you kids can't play football, you can't play tackle football. So, um, I get the safety concerns, but there, like I said, there's a ton of other contact sports um, that aren't being singled out here. Um, so I will be advocating against this. I think it impacts the mental health of many of our students in this district and statewide. And it's, it's very concerning that this, this type of bill is moving forward. And if this does pass, then what is, what's the next sport that's gonna be, um, that's gonna be banned for our kids? So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Chernus. Okay, now it's time for Communication Board Report. We'll start with um, Ms. Buck.
Well, I don't really have, don't really have anything to report. So in lieu of that, I figured I would point out some of, um, our new s- uh, student board member has done a great job of pulling together some information from our schools. So I'll just highlight a couple of those because it's what's happening out there with us being on break for the last um, couple of weeks. There hasn't been a lot of activity. Um, so first I wanted to congratulate Buena Vista Virtual Academy. Um, Niche, a website that helps match people to schools, has recognized Buena Vista Virtual Academy as the tenth best public online high school in the United States and fourth in California. Congratulations to them. Um, El Camino Real High School, three of El Camino's advanced program students will be graduating on January twenty-fourth. Um, at Eldorado, we would like to congratulate multiple sports for reaching CIF finals and football coach Zach Lamonda for being the CIF Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Zach. Um, Esperanza, uh, winter sports are currently in the middle of league. Men's and women's soccer are both having a fantastic season as both uh, as well as women's basketball. At George Key School slash Venture Academy, George Key students are looking forward to the Week of Random Acts of Kindness during the week of February twelfth. At Parkview, Parkview received an education grant from the Placentia Chamber of Commerce. The Innovate Com- uh, Commerce Program will bring three D printing and computer aided design into the school's curriculum to foster business and commerce skills through innovative and practical learning experiences. At Valencia, their cybersecurity gold team qualified for semifinals this week. They have four additional teams that work with Kramer students and will be competing in semi-fi- semifinals to qualify for nationals, uh, which is also part of the Cyber Patriot Competition. And at Yorba Linda High School, the VAPA, uh, Visual and Performing Arts has the Musical Theater Cabaret coming on Thursday, January eighteenth and Friday, January nineteenth. The school's dance company will be performing at Valencia this Friday for the Community Dance Festival. And so thank you to Emily Sun who wasn't able to be here tonight, but also sent um, a report anyway. And I wanted to make sure that we got to highlight some of our schools. So, that's it from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
Um, yes, I was going to also congratulate Buena Vista on their achievements. That is amazing and um, I'm grateful for all the hard work that teachers and staff have done to keep that school top notch. Um, also, I really wanted to express um, gratitude um, to the whole PYL community. In December, I attended so many wonderful, meaningful, uplifting events that truly highlighted our district for, for who we are, a caring community. And there were so many people involved in all these different things and I just wanted to thank them all um, for their moments of giving, for holiday cheer. Um, and I'm just so grateful for them. They, so many people made magic happen here at PYL in December, so I wanted to give a big shout out to that. And so here are some of the things that I personally witnessed. Um, I witnessed the George Key Christmas Party sponsored by the Sunrise Rotary. And all the kids were dressed in their Christmas best. They looked amazing. And they were excited to be there and enjoy a fun Christmas party. I went to the Tinsel Concert at Eldorado and it was a wonderful um, concert, a night filled with music and, and the holiday spirit. I attended with Ms. Buck, the um, Eldorado Jazz Breakfast and it was a great morning of music, very festive attire and a yummy breakfast. Um, I also went to Ruby Drive Elementary and was there when Es- the Esperanza students came and spread Christmas cheer at that school. There was a hundred and eighty Esperanza students and they were included. Um, athletes, unified PE, ASB, and they came and went to, it was just incredible to watch. They were spread out throughout the, all the classrooms and um, brought presents for each child that was wrapped. And they interacted um, with the students, helping them with a project or a Christmas assignment, depending on the age, and um, and played with the students after they opened them. And I just saw so many wonderful interactions with um, our high school students, with our elementary students. And um, I was just really grateful to be there. I also went to the Venture Choir um, Christmas Concert and it was truly, sounded amazing. And um, the Christmas cheer that those students brought was contagious to everybody in the room. And I'm keeping going here. I went to the Apple um, gift giveaway and it was truly overwhelming to see all the love that was shared on so many families throughout the district. Um, and I got to s- s- you know, sit at the table and, and color and visit with the families that were being um, that were, came there to get their presents and to hear a few of their, their heartwarming stories. And I'm just so grateful um, for everybody that was involved in putting these together. And then also, I attended the district holiday luncheon with um, Neandra and, and Carrie. And they were collecting um, food for our Family Resource Center and we enjoyed an amazing performance by the Valencia High School Jazz Choir. In non-holiday events, I attended the Avid Showcase at Ruby Drive. Um, I learned how across grade level, they infused the Avid skills through writing, inquiry and collaboration, organization and reading. And I really enjoyed learning more about the Avid um, through their student of a, um, ambassadors. They have actual students that walk you around the room and show you all the different things and how it relates to Avid and what they learned and, and you can ask them questions like, well, why did you do this? And, you know, and they can tell you, and, well, I use it this way and um, it helps me, you know, from very young, like I annotated my notes and then I could use those and, you know. It was just a really great experience. Um, I highly suggest anybody who can go to that um, in the future. You'll learn a lot. Um, also, this weekend, I went to an Eagle Court of Honor where nine of our students um, from our district earned the rank of Eagle. And I was honored to be there and congratulate these students for their outstanding achievement. And many of the Eagle projects that these stu- that our students did benefited our schools. They actually did them in our, in our local schools and we were recipients of all their hard work. And I'm just um, grateful for them. So that's what I've been up to.
Well, I definitely haven't been up to that much. As a matter of fact, I was probably um, the one that didn't do too much this, this, since our last time. It seemed like it was a whirlwind of uh, outside activity. But uh, as far as the district wise, I think I uh, I think I read a little book uh, called The Wave, which was, was sent to me and um, uh, other than that- uh other than that, you know, tried to kind of reflect on uh how things can uh definitely change given uh certain circumstances. So if you had not read it, it's a a quick, easy read, but uh has a big message behind it. So um if anything, I know that our team has been uh working through the holidays and I truly appreciate the hard work they put in uh in order to get uh three bargaining committees uh uh done and and taken care of. And I appreciate Dr. Gates for that, that work and his team. Uh also, uh anyone else that might have been in involved in those things, I really appreciate it. And thank you for making our job uh much easier. So other than that, that's uh all I have to say.
I guess that comes to me.
Yes.
Uh so uh there there's been a lot happening for uh specifically in winter sports lately. And I've had several conversations with uh parents regarding uh funding and booster clubs and uh all the alike. And one of the things that I want to make sure that we uh have on our radar, uh Dr. Chernus and and those involved, is that we are doing everything we can to make sure that all students can participate and that we have proper equipment and that we're, our facilities are kept up with the funds that we have as a district. And they're not having to reach into the pa- the pockets of parents as much as possible. Some of the things specifically we talked about with uh in regards to uh tennis. Uh we've talked about some basketball issues. Football is a big one that always comes up as far as fees. Baseball's fees seem to be high. There's just a lot of things in that area that I think need to be looked at, looked into. And um we need to, as a district, do things that we, everything that we can to make sure that we support those sports. Because I also echo what Dr. Chernus said about this potential ban of tackle football. Um in that, sports is a way that a lot of kids actually do engage in school because it's a motivator. And it's a potential way for them to get further in their education. And if there is one less sport eventually that is not available to students that they may uh thrive in, that is a potential big problem. So I echo the sentiments about that being a problem. Uh and then i- in addition to, this is still sports related. There's been a lot of talk and I've had a lot of questions about the limitations on fundraising activities for boosters. I think we need some clarity. I think we need some, somebody to um give some feedback to the booster clubs about some more specifics. But I've heard a lot of things back and forth that I um I just think is not clear about how booster clubs are allowed to operate. And if there are certain things that they should or shouldn't do, what are the things that we can um that they can't facilitate and what's the best way to do that? So I would love to see us give some, whether it's a a training or a a boot camp for the booster club treasurers or presidents to have more information so that everybody knows exactly what can be done and how they can help their students and uh everybody involved in those sports to uh be able to excel the best they can. And then lastly, um I had the opportunity to tour the print shop. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the print shop. It's actually just down the hall there in the uh from the boardroom. And I met Robert and he gave me a tour of what I actually think is a pretty cool opportunity uh that we have at our district that is not available at most districts. We, I mean, the things that we can print, it's it's not just printing flyers. They can, they print banners for the uh for the athletics, for any of the school activities, for anything involved that you have to have big format printing. They can do that. They have an engraver. They have, they have an opportunity in in many different categories to facilitate things for programs in the district, for uh our school sites specifically. And then I'd I'd like to suggest that we take one step further and we potentially integrate this into our CTE programs. There are, I mean, uh specifically at Yorba Linda, we have the business program and there's all kinds of things that could be integrated with uh either learning how to run print. Uh there are so many different products that could be utilized there. I know some of them are, but I'd I'd like to see maybe some more activity there. And then the other side of that is the digital design. I was talking with Robert there about um all of the things that they do design to be printed. And that is a skill that we have, a digital design uh program at Eldorado. And then I think there's also uh other digital designs at other campuses as well. That's an opportunity to get students involved and see a potential trade that they could, they could participate in after school with skills that they have. And we have facilities to do that. So I would love just to, this is just kind of like a um something to to put on the top of the list when we're thinking about integrating things within CTE and then other ways for our students to get involved and our district to be able to utilize. I mean, it's a great facility. The printers are awesome. And and Robert's great. So uh that's, that's the end of my report. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd, and have a safe flight home. Um so I attended uh the Christmas program for our preschool, um our new preschool with Dr. Chernus over at Bright Ranch. And uh as your kids are teenagers and even older than teenagers, some of them, you really like get a little bit nostalgic um at that age. It's such a, it's such a a fun age. And so we were able to um see them perform probably their first Christmas program ever. But not only that, it was the parents were just so excited. And like what they kept saying is, we've been asking for this for so long. And this is what we've wanted. We've wanted a preschool in our community. So I really thank you for your vision, Dr. Chernus, and our whole team here um and making that happen um all around our school district. Um I also attended, I went and did a walk through at Woodsboro where I was able to find um walk through the school, but not only that, I was able to see more Christmas programs. And uh just a really, really fun time. And I'm kind of a girl that loves Christmas, so I was like in my element. I've attended um the Yorba Linda High School and Eldorado, or I'm sorry, Esperanza High School Wrestling Tournament the other night. Um I've attended a few um Esperanza High School Basketball Games. And I've also um really been utilizing this app that you can see all of these sports games. If you guys don't have the app, it's eleven ninety nine a month. But every day you can scroll through and somebody's playing from one of our high schools. And all you gotta do is just click in and if if you're somebody who has to drive a kid to UCI for water polo and you have two hours to kill in the car, you can kind of watch our kids in their sporting events, in our students. And so that's been a really cool app um that I've been utilizing, watching a lot of sports on there. I also sat in on the Superintendent's Special Advisory Committee and um Readopia was mentioned. And that is a hot, hot commodity and like they're asking for, I mean, if whoever did Readopia, like I should have bought stock from the way that the parents were talking about it. I mean, it's very, very um innovative and it's very, and I mean, it's just a popular thing. So that was good to hear. And I was just really um happy to hear how far we've come in special education. And so I really want to thank you, Renee. Um another thing as well, I keep hearing, um and I, this kind of came to me during this meeting, where we are hearing a lot of things of um like issues where people come up and say, you know, our kids aren't being taught this, our kids aren't being taught that, or they're not hearing about World War Two or civil rights or any of this stuff. And so I know we have pacing guides, or if we don't necessarily have all the pacing guides yet, is there any way to make our curriculum available to public as to like what we're learning in high schools? So um or you know, a list, so you can go down the list and you can say, okay, in tenth grade, you've learned about this, 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 and this. So that I think that would kind of dispel um some of these rumors or these myths about what's actually going on in our school and what the kids are learning. And so I think that that could be helpful. It could be very transparent. This is what they're learning. This is what we're doing here. So we can't have um, I think, a lot of rumors and just uh dis misinformation that kind of goes on. And so I was just curious if that could be available, especially too to our parents, um you know, that are at home, who sometimes just like say, you know, you know, you're in government this year. Okay, well, what are you learning about in this class? Or you're in your history class, your world history, what are you guys gonna be studying about this? Um just kind of like a little guide that says what we're learning. So um there really isn't any misinformation about what is being taught and what is not being taught. And then finally, um about the AB seven thirty four, I am standing, you know, Todd, I know Sean, uh Dr. Chernus. I, you know, I've had two kids who play tackle football and I just think it would be an absolute travesty for the state to get rid of this, especially when we look at all of these other sports that, you know, basketball, we're having concussion issues. I don't know why we're targeting tackle football. And especially too, I believe this is absolutely parental rights, not a parental rights, but just parents issue because me, like me as a parent, I knew if one of my kids was ready for flag or if they were ready for tackle. And I know a lot of people have said the same thing. And we've come so far um in our sports as far as concussion protocols. And all kinds of um, we're just so much more advanced. And so I'm sitting here going, well, why now? And I agree. I think it's government overreach and I think it's about um you know, taking more decisions away from the parents and like leaving it from the state. So earlier today, when we heard that it could go to the floor, um as we thought maybe today or this week, um I asked Dr. Chernus if we could send um a letter up to Sacramento um opposing AB seven thirty four, especially with um it's almost like an equity issue as well. Like if the entire United States except California is able to go play tackle football, well, our kids are gonna lose out on a lot of these years. And so are we, are California State Schools, our UCs, are we gonna start polling from all these other states because they've been in the game a long time? And they're they're longer and their skill level is is better. I think that there's so many things wrong with this. And so um we sent a letter up to Sacramento, just signed myself and him, um opposing it. But then I'd also like to encourage school boards across the state, city councils across the state. I'd like to encourage everybody to start reaching out to your elected representatives, elected officials, and to take a stand against this and to stand up for kids, especially for a game that's wildly popular. Um and I mean, I just don't see like why now. And then also too, we have to ask, what is next? Because there are so many other sports, like we were saying, there's no protective equipment. How many basketball players who are on concussion protocols? We have soccer players on concussion pro- we have wrestlers. We have all kinds of this. So why football? Why now? And so I am against it. Um and I would like to advocate against this ban and um I would like to encourage everyone who is against it to make the phone calls. But then also to the city councils and your elected officials, they should be, they should be speaking out against this because this is football like, I mean, football is community. How many, how many, how many football games, you know, does everybody go to? And that's where you meet people on Friday nights. And that's where, you know, you have the cheerleading. I mean, it is about community. And I would hate to see something that unites communities such as football um be taken away. And so that is the end of my board report. All right, so it is nineteen forty seven, also known as seven forty seven PM. And uh it's time for adjournment. Trustee Anderson has asked to adjourn the meeting in memory of Debbie Naval. So go ahead.
So tonight, I'd like to um, we'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Dave Debbie Naval, who passed away on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Debbie was a special educational aide to and a value member of the PYL USD family for twenty two years. She'll be greatly missed by our district and our community.
Thank you. And can I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna have to have a roll call vote for adjournment. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. And we are adjourning at nineteen forty eight. Thank you, and we will see you all again on February thirteenth.